Yes, I'm on.
Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It's August the 20th. Councilman Wade has our prayer and our pledge.
All right, let's pray. Father have we just thank you for this day. We thank you for what you're doing, Lord, and we ask you to bless our country. Not only bless our country, bless the leadership of our country. Bless Murfreesboro as we try to make what's the best decision as possible. Lord bless our essential workers out there on the line each and every day. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we move on, I want to, as we've said in some of the other meetings, you will notice that we are sitting up here, that we don't have masks on, but we have been measured out that we're six feet away from one another and everyone who's in the audience, there's squares marked out where everyone's six feet away from one another. So, I want to make sure before Twitter war gets on us that we're not wearing masks, that everyone knows that we are social distanced. So, all right, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Any things that need to be pulled off the consent agenda?
There are no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now move into old business. We have ordinance 20023, the modification of the fiscal year 21 budget to incorporate expenditures during fiscal year 21. This is second and final reading.
Mayor, there were a few additions to this. Since we passed it on first reading, I thought I would just go over them quickly since it's been a little bit since we did the first reading. For community development, they got a new grant for HARC, and so revenues and expenses are the same. For police, they got a COVID-19 grant. Again, revenues and expenses are the same. We've gotten a state governor's local government support grant. At the last workshop, you approved us buying a radio IP logger, and that revenue and expense will be the same for that grant. The fire department had some carryover of some grant expenses that weren't budgeted originally because they just weren't able to spend it at June 30, so we've had to budget that. That one is an increase of expenses with no revenue. The golf department received a COVID grant, I'm sorry, their grant is for the Tennessee Disability Coalition, and revenues and expenses will match on that one. The transportation department received governor's local government support grant, and you approved at the August workshop to use that towards rubber buses. So, that revenue and expense are matching. And then, the loan bond fund, we found a budgeting error, this was on the first reading, that we're just correcting. It's no increase to revenue or expense, it's just a reclassification. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Wright? Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right. All right, we'll now talk about resolutions under new business. We have a discussion on refinance the city's general obligation fixed rate debt from finance. This is resolution 20R21.
Mayor, we do need to approve by resolution the ability to do a refunding on our fixed rate debt. This actually is a refunding on variable rate debt to make it become fixed rate debt. With the historic low rates right now with fixed rate debt, this looks like a very good time to refinance our 2012 loan, and we have provided a lot of information. We believe the savings and interest will be between 500 and 1 million, depending on the bids that would come in on this, and we recommend this would be a good thing for us to do.
Any questions?
So, move.
You said between 500 and 1 million, that's a pretty wide range.
Well, this will go out to bid, so we really think it'll be closer to 1 million, but because it's out to bid, we don't know what the bids will come in as. This will go out for several to bid on. We have been a very desirable investment for people when we've gone out to bid before, and we've gotten extremely good rates, and we don't anticipate that to be any different on this one, but because we don't know exactly where it will land, it is a wide margin. I think it'll be closer to 1 million.
All right, we have a motion.
So, move. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into land use matters. Thank you, Ms. Wright. We are looking to amend the Victory Station PUD south of Franklin Road. Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Our first public hearing tonight under land use matters is to amend the Victory Station planned unit development. It is, you know, Victory Station, the PUD spans both the north and south sides of Franklin Road, quite a large planned development. It's been around for quite a while, and there's still quite a bit of acreage left to develop. It was first approved by the city council in the year 2000, so it's the 20th anniversary of the approval of this, of this PUD. And as I mentioned, still a lot of land left to develop. You can see on the aerial photograph, there's been a good bit of development. The Belden Reserve Apartment Complex, the Speedway, the Ascend Federal Credit Union, the CVS, the On the Run, there's a new optometrist's office next to the On the Run. Also, the Victory Point subdivision was a part of the Victory Station PUD. It was the crossings at Victory Station Assisted Living Facility that was built just a couple of years ago north of Franklin Road. As Swanson Development continues to market the property for development, they're looking to fine tune the PUD to help them market the property and continue to build out the PUD. They've amended the planned development several times before, and they brought, they brought forth this amendment, which they feel will help in the administration of, of the zoning of this, of this development, make it a little bit less complicated, make it a little bit, add some uses that might make the property more marketable. The chart that was submitted as a part of the, as a part of the application is, throws a lot at you, but Ms. Marina Rush in our office actually did a great job of simplifying it in some charts and the staff comments. First, before I get into that, the area, the specific portions of the PUD that are being affected are the areas colored in blue on that before you. All, all other areas of the PUD are unaffected. So, as we look at the planned development, you'll notice that there are the areas that are, in this particular exhibit, that are colored in the orange and green, those are the specific areas that, and they're called the parcels in the development, not parcels as we think of with the, the county tax map and parcels, but parcels being, meaning different pods, the development where different uses are permitted. So, the things that they are looking to do is to combine parcels J and K. And so, if you look at the, the chart that's on the screen right now, what they're trying to do is to combine parcels J and K, because the uses are almost identical in J and K. J and K is the area here, which is located at the intersection of Swanholm and Battalion. And so, the changes in uses, as you can see, are at the bottom of this page. It essentially adds four uses that were not permitted previously under parcel J, and one use that was not permitted previously under parcel K. They're looking to do the same thing with parcels Q and R. You'll see the changes, the two additions for parcel Q, and the three additions for parcel R. So, they're, what they're, they're reconciling these two, these two parcels, so that all of the uses are the same. You'll notice that one of the, one of the new uses in parcel Q is single-family attached, which is already allowed in parcel R, single-family attached being, townhomes would be a type of single-family attached development. At seven dwelling units per acre, parcel Q is 6.8 acres, so you're looking at about 47, 47 or 48 additional units that would be permitted by this PUD amendment. Also, they're looking to add new use in parcels O2 and parcel V. The new uses in parcel O2 are the ones with the N in red under that column, and the new uses in parcel V are the ones with the N in that column. So, there are six new uses in parcel O2, and I believe 14 new uses proposed in parcel V. Another change to this that is proposed deals with the old Volunteer Fire Station, which is here. The old Volunteer Fire Station has always been within the bounds of the PUD zoning, but for some reason, in previous iterations of the zoning, it was not specified what quote unquote parcel it belonged to. So, the nearest one was parcel O2. We've always just kind of casually said, okay, the uses that are permitted in the old Volunteer Fire Station building are the uses that are allowed in the adjacent O2 parcel. That's been kind of casually done over the years. Here, what we're trying to do is formalize that and make the old Volunteer Fire Station a part of, of the O2 parcel in the planned development. Those are the main changes that are proposed. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this request on July the 8th and recommended its approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Matt Taylor and several representatives of Swanson Development are here, and I believe Mr. Taylor has a few comments, but I'll be happy to answer any questions now or later on.
All right, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Matt Taylor. I don't have a formal presentation, just, I think Mr. Blomley did a very good job, a very detailed analysis of explaining why we're doing this. It was to clean up a few areas, such as the old fire hall, and then to simplify some of these areas that were a little fuzzy in the original PUDs, and were almost identical in the allowed uses, and being side by side, it just didn't make any sense, in our opinion, to leave those separate. And then, some of it was just the requests we were hearing on individual parcels, especially along Highway 96. That's why you see several changes inside of that O2. So, myself, or Mr. Joe Swanson Jr., or his niece, Cara, will be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions? All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this amendment, if you'll come to the podium, if you'll keep all your questions directed directly to the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have five minutes. As an individual, you have three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider ordinance 20OZ25 for first reading.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
No.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into item 17, amending the zoning ordinance regarding section 26 for planning. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This particular item is the culmination of a lot of work by our planning and legal staffs. It kind of started out very simply. We were looking at some requests to have off-site parking agreements from businesses, and the way that our zoning ordinance is currently written with respect to off-site parking agreements is, the off-site area where a business is trying to, to gain additional parking has to be in the same ownership as the, as the business requesting the parking. And 99% of the time, it's going to be in different ownership, and so, we were having trouble allowing off-site parking agreements to solve parking problems because of the way that section 26 of the zoning ordinance was, was written. And so, we set about improving that section, making it more flexible, allowing for more creative solutions to, to, for businesses and other developments to meet minimum parking requirements, and we decided just to take a, take a look at the entire section 26, which deals with off-street parking, queuing, and loading. And I think we've made some, some really good common sense improvements, and, and we've addressed some, some issues that have become more prevalent over the years. So, the off-site and the joint parking agreements, we cleaned up the language on that, I think made it clearer, more user-friendly, and also more flexible with respect to the off-site area where parking is proposed to be used to meet parking requirements. So, for single-family attached developments, mostly townhouse developments, we've seen more and more developments that have come to us, developers that have come to us and wanted to use garage space, garage spaces to meet their minimum parking requirements. Our zoning ordinance, the way it's currently written, is a little bit ambiguous as to how we do that, and it provides very little guidance, because that, for a long time, the prevalent type of townhouse development was, were surface park townhouse developments, and now we're seeing garage townhouse developments be just as popular as, as townhouse developments, if not more so. And so, in responding to that demand for garage townhouse developments, and for, and to developers who are wanting to use those garages to meet their minimum parking requirements, we thought some, some good common sense regulations were in order to help guide us, because many times, we're, we're kind of, without these regulations, we've been kind of off the cuff, trying our best to work with the developers to, to make sure that there's enough space inside the garages, make sure that the garages aren't being abused for other purposes, such as, such as the storage of household items, or boats, or RVs. So, we have, we're proposing for single-family attached developments that are seeking to use garage parking spaces to meet their minimum parking requirements. We're proposing minimum dimensional requirements for the garages, and requirements that they be used for the parking of vehicles, the minimum number of vehicles to meet the, the minimum parking requirements. One thing that I want to, that I want to emphasize is that this will only apply to developments where the developers are voluntarily using the garage parking spaces to meet their minimum parking requirements, and we think that that, that does serve a purpose. I think that, I think, one, I think, single-family attached developments with garages are, are desirable, but also minimizing the amount of vehicular parking outside of the units creates a cleaner streetscape, removes clutter from the, from the streetscape, and creates a more visually pleasing environment. So, so putting these regulations in place, enabling the use of garages to meet minimum parking requirements, I think, I think achieves a number of different objectives. We had some concerns at first from the development community regarding the dimensional requirements. So, Mr. McKnight and I, and several other members of staff, had a stakeholder meeting with about eight or nine developers who we know build townhomes on a regular basis, and, and we were able to come to a consensus on, on the dimensional requirements for the garages. And I think also, we also came to a consensus that those stakeholders liked the fact that we were putting certainty within our, within our ordinance. I think one thing that we hear on a regular basis is that many times, developers don't mind more regulations, they just want to have certainty. They want to know what they have to design to. And so, I think that after we came to an agreement on those dimensional requirements, there was a general acceptance by the, by the developers that we spoke with regarding these regulations. Finally, the third major, major change is with regards to parking stall, parking stall size. Our zoning ordinance right now offers an eight and a half foot wide parking stall option. Nine feet wide is the standard option, but there's no guidance as to how, what is the maximum percentage of, of eight and a half foot wide stalls. So, what we are proposing is that there be a 20% cap outside of the C, outside of the CCO for eight and a half foot wide stalls, so at, as a percentage of the overall number of parking spaces in the lot. Within the CCO, we know there is an additional need for flexibility, so we have included an exemption in the proposed ordinance that does not have that 20% cap within the boundaries of the city core overlay district. And there are several other proposed modifications that are outlined in the staff comments. I'll be happy to address those, or answer any questions before or after the public hearing. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on July the 8th and recommended its approval to the city council.
All right, all right. We'll need to hold a public hearing for this zoning ordinance change. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 20O26.
Mayor, I want to just make a comment. This was, part of this was not easy for me. We talked about this in the Planning Commission. I did not want us to get in the business of regulating how people use garage space once they're a homeowner. I wasn't totally comfortable with that. Matthew, will you talk a little bit about how we tweaked that in the process and some of the adjustments, just to be sensitive to that? I, I do understand the benefit from a spacing standpoint to use that and to make sure that we don't crowd the streets, but I just didn't want us to be in a situation where we're policing garage use for the city. So, Matthew, you talk about that a little bit.
Sure, sure. So, first, I think the, the biggest point to understand is that the only time where those dimensional or, or usage requirements for garages come into play is when a, when a developer voluntarily chooses to use the garages to meet his minimum parking requirements. There is nothing that forces a developer to do that. So, when the developer does that, the regulations kick in. After hearing Mr. Martin's concerns, we had language in there that specifically stated that, that usage of the garages that, that was inconsistent with the use of the garage for parking was considered a violation. We took that language out. Now, obviously, anything that is, that is in violation of what is in the ordinance is a violation, but we softened the language a bit and, and took that, that very direct language out of the ordinance. And we also, I think there were some other changes to the language that, you know, if, if someone had a garage that was required to be able to park one vehicle, and it was one and a half, it was, it was wide enough for one and a half vehicles, well, we don't want to restrict somebody from being able to park their CDO, or, or to put their luggage, or anything, or other household items in the other half of vehicle space. That's not what we want to do. We really wanted to be able to just preserve it for the number of vehicles that it was required to be preserved for. So, we really softened the language so that it made it more permissible, those other items to be in there, provided that the requirements of parking were met. Thank you.
All right, any questions?
If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now hear from Planning Commission recommendations to schedule public hearings. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. We have one public hearing to schedule. It is for the assigned ordinance amendment that the Planning Commission considered at its August 5th meeting. Planning Commission recommended approval. We would recommend that the city council schedule a public hearing on September the 24th, if it pleases the council.
So, move. Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Epstein.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we now, we'll move to on motion, and we have a funding of strategic partnerships. Ms. Jackson.
Good evening. You may recall that we discussed funding recommendations and alignments for strategic partnerships in length at our January council workshop. The three-year transitional implementation from what we used to call outside agencies now to strategic partnerships began in fiscal year 20. In the current budget, considered year two of that transition, funding for each of the qualifying partnering agencies was budgeted at level amounts consistent to the previous year's funding. In your agenda packet is the strategic partnership funding schedule. qualifying partnering agencies was budgeted at level amounts consistent to the previous year's funding. In your agenda packet is the strategic partnership funding schedule. Now, welcome, any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Jackson?
So move. Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll move to item 20 to approve a lease agreement with We Care Daycare.
The city of Murfreesboro has held this lease agreement for daycare at 510 Hancock Street since the facility was built in the 80s. This is a renewal of that lease, considered an in-kind contribution from the city to We Care for a monthly rental that is valued at $2,750 per month.
Any questions?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a double second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Thank you for your hard work on the community partnerships, strategic partners. We'll move to change order request for Stone River Greenway Extension Phase Four.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. This is a change order request to reflect increases in the line item quality for road and drainage. The Stone River Greenway Extension Phase Four project consists of paving a section of the greenway and providing trailhead amenities along the west fork of Stone River from Barfield Road to Barfield Crescent Park, which is approximately 2.65 miles. Bids for the construction of the project were received on April 13th, 2017, with Jared Builders, Inc. being awarded the contract as the lowest bidder. The contractor reached substantial completion on March 10th, 2020. During the construction, line item for road and drainage project, excuse me, line item for road and drainage project grading increased by 27,000 cubic yards due to inadequate base survey that the original quantities were estimated from by the designer. The physical impact of this, the request, the requested change order amount is 707,000, However, due to saving in other areas of approximately 527,000, the total contract amount will be increased by about $180,000 or 3.3% of the total construction cost. Staff recommends approval of the change order request number five that will increase the amount of the original base contract from $5,443,200 to approximately $5,623,200 based on savings from other line items associated with future change order number six. I'm available for any questions, and Michelle Emerson is available as well.
There are no questions. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll move to a professional services contract for the Murfreesboro Transit Facility. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, mayor. This is a professional service contract to perform National Environmental Policy Act, which we all call NEPA, I think y'all have heard of that, NEPA documents and design services and documentation for up to 30% of the final design phases for the parcel at State Route 99 and Bridge Avenue for the city's transit facility. The planned Murfreesboro Transit Facility will provide a centralized location for rover operations, more benefit to the city for regional mobility and regional transportation authority connectivity with potential park and ride expansions. The site at State Route 99 and Bridge Avenue presents a viable location for the facility as it offers efficient land to handle future land services with convenient, convenient connectivity to major thoroughfares. Because the city receives state and federal assistance for the preliminary development of the original site, the city is required to utilize local funds on the new site to complete the amount of work that was accomplished on the original site or repay federal and state dollars expended on the original site. In order to remain eligible for state and federal assistance in the development, property acquisition, and construction of this transit facility, the city must satisfy these requirements. Future grant funding is anticipated to be 80% federal and 10% state with 10% local match. Improve Act funding is expected to be 75% state and 25% local match. The city has currently obligated 3.1 million of federal dollars and 6.4 million state dollars to the transit facility. The city, as of June 30th, has about 4.9 million federal dollars available that are unobligated funds or in reserve for public transportation. This contract is time of material not to exceed $834,325. Funding is available through the CIP. Staff recommends approval of this professional service contract and to authorize staff to move forward with the development of the transit facility. I'm available for any questions.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to the, thanks, Mr. Kerr, the Northeast Regional Pump Station Task Order Amendment.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to, to come before you tonight. A couple of slides, just to acquaint you with the Northeast Regional Pump Station. I think it's been a while since I've mentioned what this pump station would do and accomplish. The slide before you, that's, those are actually pictures of the north, or the Southwest Pump Station, so this is going to be similar to that, except on the northeast side. If I can get my pointer here. If you kind of look up here in this corner of the map, if I can, well, try this again. Do a little animation here to kind of show you what's, what's playing, oh, can't open specification. Okay, never mind. Bottom line is, these three yellow blocks here is the Dejarnet Pump Station and then two, two pump stations on Compton Road. Those will actually be abandoned by these green lines that will go up in gravity to a new Northeast Regional. This is up by the water plant and the VA Hospital. We, we really kind of do an end run where we take this Forest Main and take it straight to the WRF, the Water Resource Recovery Facility. What that does is it takes about 8 million gallons off of our Sinking Creek line in our main pump station. So, what we, that's kind of the high-level view of what the Northeast Pump Station is and what it accomplishes. Today, we're doing a little more specific engineering task order amendment. We have found a more optimal route for the Forest Main coming into the WRF. If you can kind of see this dash line, we were going through about five or six lots in Oakley. They're deep lots and we really wouldn't have affected any structures, but we thought it would be better to actually cross the river a little bit farther north, or west, rather, and then come into the plant with the blue line. So that requires some additional surveying, and you can kind of see that route revision here. The Forest Main is going to follow Cherry Lane, the new Cherry Lane arterial or road that we're going to be looking at, and so that's kind of why it's taken us a little bit of extra time. We also have some revisions down here, English Hill. We're going to abandon a little pump station that's part of that subdivision right now that can, will feed up to this Northeast Regional. The amended amount of the task order is $30,640. So I'm available for any questions if you have them.
So move.
Second. Motion to second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll move to Energy Distribution System Optimizer.
We kind of went through this at the last, or a few weeks ago at the council meeting. Another little animation here. We have five distribution tanks in the system. The Jones Boulevard Tank fills up first, Halls Hill, Mill Street, Stony Meadow, and then the Tiger Hill Tank fills up last. We have one pump station at our water plant, and you can kind of see, this graph may not mean a whole lot to you, but there's this spike. When those first three tanks fill, we have a spike in pressure. So what we're planning on doing is using, you approved the, these valves, actuator valves to come in and create that back pressure so that the tanks would fill and empty on a more equalized basis. That was about a $25,000 expenditure, but the, the brains behind this operation is this software. It's $145,500. That sounds like a lot until you think about the offset cost. We had about $870,000 programmed in our long-term CIP to actually put booster station, booster pumping stations in the system to accomplish the same thing. So we're really taking that, that, that cost is now offset with a much lesser expensive option and using these actuator valves to create that back pressure. So we're asking you tonight for the approval of the software of $145,500. That does have an annual maintenance fee of $8,000 a year as well. So I'm available for questions if you have them.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll move into purchase and installation of energy pump asset management system.
Thank you, mayor. Last item here, this is just a picture of our membrane feed pumps. If you look over here on the right-hand side, we do have PAO membrane system. This is kind of, they look like spaghetti noodles. They're actually bringing the water up through the center of the tube and then the, the water gets pressed to the outside of the membrane. This creates a very high-quality water, takes out a lot of microorganisms, bacterias, to some level, virus removal. These pumps, and again, this graph may not mean a lot, there's four pumps, so they, they have a maximum pressure and a maximum flow required some days when there's a high demand, and on other times you have a minimum pressure and minimum flow. These variable frequency drives allow these pumps to operate at a, a very different speeds or rotations per minute on the pump. Right now, we're operating at a pressure that's relatively high. We think with the addition of this software, we can reduce that pressure by almost, and when I say reduce pressure by 48%, that means electrical costs go down significantly. We actually, if we achieve the reduction that we think we're going to achieve, this software would pay itself back in less than six months. You can kind of see our break-even analysis here. So the software is relatively cheap in this case, so it's a $15,700 expense and the annual service fee, I'm sorry, yeah, the annual service fee is $5,600. But we expect it to bring a, a return of around, an annual return of almost $48,000 on power costs. So I'm available for questions.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion to second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Mr. Kerr?
No, sir, that is it.
Okay. Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move into licensing. You have some beer permits.
We do, mayor. We have four regular permits. Two are grocery markets, one is inside of a hotel, one is in a market deli. They are both new locations. We have an ownership change at a convenience store, and we have a new location for a restaurant. The background checks meet our requirements, and they all need to finish up their building codes inspection. So if you approve it tonight, we will hold it until they have met those requirements. I'd be glad to answer questions. I also have another one for special event permit. I'll go ahead and mention now, Oakland's Mansion was having a fundraiser in September. They've changed the date and the time. You've already approved the permit once. This is actually just a change for the date and time.
So move. Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any board and commission appointments?
No, sir.
If, council members, if you don't mind, if you would, please send me the board and commissions that you serve on currently. We're going to have to shuffle or figure out how we're going to do that. So if you'll send those to me maybe over the next week, that will be prepared by the end, what your choices are, if you want to stay where you are. And I know Councilman LaLance has already requested to be on the Planning Commission, so.
I think that's a great choice.
Everybody's laughing. We would put him on there with a heavy debt prescription for blood pressure medication.
I don't know how far away Whittaker is right now, but I think I just heard him.
All right, so if y'all send that to me, that would be great. All right, and any statements that we need to pay?
Not, not tonight, sir.
Okay, any other business from staff? Any other business from the council? I got a couple of items quickly. I know we had a discussion on Wednesday about EMS and emergency response inside the city. We've had some good discussions over the last week, had a really good talk with Mayor Ketrin this morning, and would like to throw this out if the council is agreeable to this. We talked about putting a special committee together or a task force that would not be comprised of any elected officials. The meetings would be open, so if we wanted, as an elected official, you want to sit in the back of the room and listen to these discussions, we could do that, but, you know, we really, as council members, and for that matter, commissioners shouldn't be involved in day-to-day business, and that's really what this is. So, we agreed, based upon council approval, that we would put a task force together with four members from the city, four members from the county, and sit down and find a way to work through some of the issues that, or opportunities, I should say, that we have, and including opening up our inter-local agreement that we signed back in 2016 with some opportunities that we need to address. But he agreed to that. I think that will, you know, be a good start. We talked about a six-month timeline to, to get that done with them reporting back to us on a monthly basis exactly what's been discussed and what they're working towards. And, you know, if there's things that the county wants the city to do and we don't feel like we want to do that, or vice versa, then that's reported back to us and we can see the progress. And for right now, put the request for proposals on pause and, and just sort of see what's the, the best outcome. Now, I, I did talk about that the four people that we would put on from our side needs to specifically be a rank-and-file first responder or firefighter with Murfreesboro who's out there every single day and see some of these issues. So the, the people that, and talked to Mayor Ketrin about this, I don't know the four that, that they would put on. He did say two would be Director Hudgens and EMA Director Chris Clark in that, clearly, Chief Folks, Jeff Wright, our medical, Chief of Medical Response. We wanted to recommend Josh Oliver, who Josh has been with the city for over 20 years, almost 30 years, and he's also a captain at, what station's he, a captain? Captain at Station One. And then the other.
Paramedic.
Yeah, and he's a paramedic. And then the other would be Bill Terry, who is our IT Director, because we really need to break this up into two separate areas. Dispatch is one topic, and then the other is medical response. So that way, Bill has been instrumental in building our network and building our, our dispatch, so that would be the IT side. But I'm throwing that out there. That's what I told Mayor Ketrin, and when I talked to him early this morning, that would, would maybe be a good start. Instead of getting them here on, what was the date? Instead of getting them here on, what was the date, Craig, September 9th or September? That, you know, let's let them sit down and figure this out. And I mean, I plan on, I want to be there and listen, so I'll sit in the back of the room and listen. That way, we can all hear how the discussions go. But that way, it, it just keeps it more at an administrative level on dealing with these issues.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, I think the spirit of it would be, and, and one of the things that I would say would be one of the, a good charge for that group in addition to what you're talking about, the dispatch, the medical would be, you know, clearly to keep in mind the overarching things here of, you know, we're just trying to achieve a better result for the citizens of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County, right? And, and that's what this has always been about, so we want to make sure that that's happening. And, you know, I would say a charge of cooperation. You know, one of the things that I just think would be, you know, as I sit in the room, I, I want to make sure that, that everybody is trying to cooperate. And look, I think, you know, one of the things that I've thought through in this is that the importance of our relationship with the county and on so many levels and, and that, you know, we really need to be able to try to do everything, exhaust every means we can to facilitate cooperation. And hopefully this next few months, we'll be able to knock out some really good stuff and, and make some great improvements and I'm, I'm optimistic about it.
Would we, you said put the RFPs, RFQs on pause.
Just set on my side.
So I think that's an important piece of this, just to make sure that we're not running parallel tracks, to make sure in good faith, everybody's coming to the table, that, that we're going to do the right thing. So, you know, I, I think my expectation to give this the opportunity it deserves is we're not continuing to have conversations about that until we get to the point where we say, hey, we're ready to really move in that direction because I think, from just my perspective, I think we got ahead of ourselves with that a little bit, just my opinion.
Yep.
I might say that, I don't know what the reasonable time would be for them to deliberate on this, but to, maybe one of the first things they decide is, you know, how long are we going to be discussing this so that doesn't, we don't delay this process for an extended length of time, but have some expectation as to when we're going to come to a resolution of this. So that might be something that they could agree upon in their first meeting as to what is the timeframe that they're going to function under.
I mean, I threw six months out there this morning when we talked. I mean, I would hope it wouldn't take six months to do that. I mean, I would hope six weeks would be something that they could sit down and, and figure out. And, but, you know, I, I do know, we, we did talk about, and I want to make sure publicly to thank Dr. Russ Galloway for his service that he's given, not only to our community, but to Rutherford County EMS and to the city of Murfreesboro. At no point during our discussion that we had last week did, did I want anyone feel like that the council or, or our staff, that we were trying to throw Dr. Galloway under the bus on any of that discussion. So if that was taken, I want to publicly apologize. Dr. Galloway, I can't imagine you're watching this right now, but if you go back, we want to say, you know, thank you. I think the, one of the things that we did talk about this morning that, you know, it would be prudent for our staff, it's always good to have different opinions on people pushing on, on different ideas. And so we talked about that it probably is a good idea, not just for Rutherford County, but for the city of Murfreesboro to have a different medical director solely because it's always good, you know, that's why doctors, you can go to one doctor and you go get a second opinion because doctors see things differently. And so we agreed that we thought that that would be beneficial to the residents of Rutherford County to have two medical directors that may be able to, to work with, with one another to see things a little, little differently. So, you know, we've, I, I know that would be something that's going to be a discussion that our staff is working on, on, you know, who that would be for the city of Murfreesboro. And, and that would give the council a different perspective too, because we, we, again, not to get in the weeds on this, but, you know, our protocols and things need to be recommended from a doctor and that's something as a council member, we can see and know. None of us are doctors and I think we clearly talked about that last Wednesday. So that's the direction we'd like to go and if everyone's okay with that, we'll start that process tomorrow. And I just ask them to let us know, you know, our group, that when they meet, and that way, if council members want to go, then we can go and that'll, that'll be a good thing that we can sit and talk about. Now, if we do go, I know, I see Adam hopping up.
I was asking, do we need a vote?
Do we need a vote?
I don't know.
I have, I have a comment.
Okay.
You ready for me, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Me personally, I don't agree with having a task force. I don't agree with that, but it sounds like that's the consensus of the council, so that's fine with me. But I'm very, I'm very adamant about not wanting to give six months. In fact, I don't want to give three months because this is something that's been discussed at least two years. So all of the, I feel all of the specifics are already on the board and I still would like to see the entire council come together with the people you named so we can get all, hear everything we need to hear because we're going to be the bottom-line decision-makers. So I think we need to be at the table when everything is discussed. That's just my opinion. And as far as the timeline, I think the very, very max is six weeks.
I mean, for what it's worth, I, I think the, I appreciate Madeline's comment. I would just say that my, my, I don't really know, I don't feel like I know the exact things that have to get worked through well enough to put, for me to put such a specific timeline on it. And so I'd probably, you know, it wouldn't hurt my feelings, maybe you said it, Bill, that, you know, if they get in their first couple of meetings and kind of get their task list. Because, I mean, one of the things that I do think is important from this is that we kind of have a measurable goal, you know, that after, after a meeting or two, they can have a task list that says, look, these are the things we're trying to achieve that we think will help and, and that, you know, then if, for example, if Bill Terry says, well, we need to incorporate three different types of, of, of technology into this thing to, to make the dispatch work better, for example, you know, it just may be physically impossible to achieve that in six weeks, you know? So I just don't know that. So, but, I mean, I, so I'd be willing to get that a little bit more flexibly personally. And honestly, I think the, the spirit of this for, for me, that I like about it is that we are giving staffs more time to kind of get together and work through this and, and it is not us specifically. So that's just my opinion. I, I think I'd stick with it.
Even after maybe a month or so, they can report back to us and give us an update where they are. But I would like to say that the council would like, as we move forward, I'd like to make sure that the people, the four people representing the city understand that we want this to work out what's best for this, not only the city of Murfreesboro, but the entire residents of Rutherford County. So I would give you a charge of, make sure that we understand that that's the common goal when we go into this meeting. Not to, not to bicker, bicker about who does what, but come to a common agreement to make sure that we're all on the same page. Because I'd hate to, after six months or whatever amount of time, we're back at this stage again. That's a waste of time.
I'll make one of the comment too, and this, this is going to sound harsh, I don't intend.
Microphone.
I don't intend for it too, but, you know, just to be fair, we've been struggling with this. I know it's been, folks have been struggling with it a lot longer than I've been here. So, you know, I know it's been hard and there's been a lot of conversation, a lot of frustration with this. But are, do we, are we going to have the right people in the room to be able to moderate that discussion from the standpoint that, you know, part, part of the challenge is everybody's got their own self-interest to a certain extent. And I know we're charging them to not feel that way or have that and I, I appreciate that. I think that's the right thing to do. But who's going to make sure, who's going to carry that torch, that independent torch there? I mean, that, that does concern me a little bit, you know? Because what we don't want to do is burn six months and we're back in the same place because everybody's going to be really frustrated.
Well, you know, my opinion, I think we have had the discussions to say if, if our two main priorities are to provide the best patient care that we have in this, in Rutherford County and our second priority is for us to be, and this is not just Murfreesboro, but this is Rutherford County too, is to be able to be dispatched efficiently and correctly, then, you know, my opinion, those are the two number-one priorities that we all share. So if they can get that worked out, then, you know, talking about these other proposals should become mute. And I think it also needs to be that our staff understands that what may be best right now in the short term may not be best in the long term. And we need to make sure that, you know, if we have our own medical director, we have a charge that we want to be dispatched, our dispatch to get fixed and we want our patient care to be fixed, then I would think that we should be able to do that, you know, together. I, we did have the, you know, all of us have different personalities on how we handle things. I, I think that we have to have our top leaders at the table and that's, so I'm, you know, and, and maybe that's, that's been the issue. I mean, going all the way back to 2016, I've not ever been involved in having to negotiate an inter-local agreement on medical response that, I, I mean, I'm not a firefighter. So, you know, I think that's been some of the issues that political officials and elected officials should not be involved in day-to-day delivery of services to our residents. I mean, that's, we're not trained to do that. And I think hopefully pulling us out of that decision-making process on whether you use a 12-lead or what a paramedic does should not be what we're discussing at council. It should be, protocols are in place and we're all going to work together. So I hope, you know, that's what the goal should be.
I think the, you know, one of the big obvious things there is the fact that we're able to attend.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, that we, that, that really, you know, again, we're supposed to be more directional in the things that we're doing. And if, if, if I'm there and, and I get the, the vibe that one side is not being cooperative, I suspect I'm probably going to say, hey, it looks like you're not being cooperative. And that may be the one as it relates to this or to this, you know? I mean, so maybe that's still a good role from a standpoint of, you know, I don't want to be discussing the six-point lead stuff, but, you know, I do, I think it's, you know, the, the cooperative piece of this and all that kind of stuff and the big-picture stuff is clearly where we should be on it. So, I mean, I, I think we can still, I, I think we can still manage that. It doesn't necessarily have to come down to those eight people in the room. I think completely would be for my, for my.
I think our intent, and what I'm hearing from the council and what I've heard from the council over the last really two or three weeks, our intent is to find a way to provide the service with the current provider that we have. But if, you know, that's, that's the intent. Now, you know, if we're sitting in the meetings and again, we may see something different. But, and I know, Adam, I saw you get up. I would assume that since there could be more than one elected official at these meetings, these need to be advertised, public meetings, that, that we would, even though there's no deliberation, if two or three of us are sitting together, I assume that, that would need to be advertised to be safe?
That would need to be said before assessment.
Okay. That's, that's why I saw you getting up, I was going to make sure and.
And I, I want to make, I want to make one last comment before we get away from this because I, you know, I've been, you know, fairly active as far as talking with staff and stuff like that and something hit me, and I'll, I'll go ahead and just get it out right now, is that recently something kind of hit me that I feel like we as a council sort of left the door open to pursue this angle. And, and I think we did it for the right reasons as far as getting options in front of us. And, you know, I think I said it that day, I feel obligated to do that, to look at options. So that sort of left the door open to go down that road. And, and so, you know, my, my take on it is, we kind of start fresh, fresh slate, forget everything that's happened in the past for a minute here, let's, you know, let's just get back to the table and, and start clean and get some stuff done.
Ma'am.
Everyone okay with that?
Yes, may I have a comment? I mean, I have a question for you. It's a lot of people don't understand what we are talking about tonight. Can you just briefly, for the public, say, can you just briefly say to the public what we're talking about?
Yeah, we're, we're talking about service delivery with our current EMS provider. We've been working on this since 2000, before me. So, I mean, this has been something they've been working on since 2000, I, I don't even know. But really what we're talking about is dispatch and patient care inside the city of Murfreesboro. So that's something that's going to be worked on. Many months ago, we put a request for proposal out and we've not seen those proposals as a council. Those proposals have not been presented to, they're sealed proposals, correct? So they're, they're still sealed and not, and not public. We've, none of us have seen those. So that's really what the decision is. So I think what we're talking about doing is putting those over to the side. Hopefully, we don't have to see those proposals. That's the, the goal, is not to see those. And our current, Rutherford County EMS is something that we can, we can work through, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, no problem. All right, we'll move on. I have one other piece of business and this is going to, I've not talked to staff about this. So is Mr. Blomley still here? Mr. McKnight's here, so even better. I want to come up and get council's opinion on this. You know, I have a business downtown. Mr. Shacklet has a business downtown. We've had lots of discussion on a business, The Curious Kitchen, that was on State Street that we all talked about, that wanted to remodel a piece of property but couldn't meet it, meet the adequate parking and because they were not in the commercial business district that we, you know, we couldn't get them to accommodate or find a reciprocal parking agreement. This idea popped into my head that I would like to find a way that we write something in an ordinance, if, you know, if we've got areas inside our city that are not part of the CBD district, but someone wants to redevelop or improve those, then, I mean, I think that's a good thing. You look at what the Brass Horn's done, Florida Brothers. So we shouldn't be, because we don't have a mechanism in place stifling those groups from, and, and most of them are small businesses. So small businesses can't come in and just buy adjacent property to try to do parking. So what I'd like to see is if, if, for example, a business has to have 14 parking spots and that's what's required and there are no park, there's no parking around, this is only for the downtown area, then whenever we redevelop for certain streets, you know, we make people bank for the streets that are going to be redeveloped at some point. It may be 30 years from now before the streets redevelop, but you have to pay that money when you do your project. There has to be a way that if someone has a downtown project that fits into these requirements, that we almost have like we would a tree bank, we have a parking bank. And so if you're required for 14 spots and you can't develop a parking lot and say that it costs someone, I'm throwing this number out, it costs someone $6,000 a spot to build a parking lot, then if that developer or small business owner wants to pay into a parking bank, then they can get approval, but they put that money into a parking bank and then we find property downtown that we want to buy and put a parking lot or add on to a fourth story on the parking garage or, you know, whatever it is. But my guess is if you've got a bunch of people who can't get their parking, and, and I realize we've done traffic counts and there's certain things that staff would have to look at, but there's got to be a way to promote some of these small businesses who want to redevelop areas. But, you know, there's no way for somebody to get the parking downtown and that's just part of it. So I want to maybe get y'all to come up with a proposal that if a small business needs 15 spots and they can contribute $60,000 into a bank, then maybe we can go find a way to build parking downtown and the development pays for it. to build parking downtown and the development pays for it. So, yeah. Need to be creative on trying to figure some of these things out.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Good idea.
All right. I know several of the staff.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I was going to ask another question. That's, it's not about what you're talking about.
Okay.
Are we meeting next week?
Craig, are we meeting next week?
Right now, we don't have any public hearings, and I don't believe we have any items. So we'll have to make a determination tomorrow, Monday, but it doesn't look like it.
It's Rick's birthday, so I thought we probably do need to meet.
For cake, sheet cake.
Week for.
Be that.
I was already celebrating.
Yeah, I was just going to bring Mr. LaLance a wheelchair if we were, but, you know.
Well, it wasn't too many years ago that he was.
A wheelchair.
So.
Should have been. Just made my way out of that wheelchair not too long ago, Madeline.
All right. Craig, have you got any other business? Council members, any other business? Staff?
Shane, one brief comment. This may be the culmination of several years of involvement with our city, and I just wanted to say it's been an honor and a pleasure to have, I guess about 50 years ago, I started coaching T-ball. I was 13, and I wasn't old enough to coach at that time, because you had to be 14 to coach in the City of Murfreesboro. And our head coach quit that year about, about the time we started the season, and Mr. Duffy called me and said, happy birthday, Eddie. And at, and from that point, I guess that we assumed I was 14, and a career began in public service. And it's, it's been an honor, a privilege to have served the city 42 years prior to becoming on the council with Parks and Recreation, and I guess the last eight years I've served on their board. So this is 50 years, and, and it has been a pleasure, it has been an honor to the people who voted for me in the most recent election. I say thank you to the staff, thank you to the people I've served with, quality people. Y'all do a wonderful job. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Eddie, thank you, ma'am.
Eddie, I think you know how we all feel about you. I was saving this till the end of November, but, you know, what most people don't realize that we don't always agree, but at the end of the day, when we all leave here, you're a family because you spend years with each other, and so I want to thank you for what you've done. I had lunch with Eddie today, and we're going to find a way to keep Eddie continually engaged in our city, because, you know, Eddie served on planning commission for many years, and I can truly say this, Eddie turned into a better council member after he served on, served on planning commission, and we thank you for your service, and most of all, thank you for your heart.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll stand adjourned.